The meeting to order. We have a quorum. I believe Mr. Fine wants the floor before we do anything else.
I do, it's, um, we have three staff members here tonight, two of whom are having a birthday.
Oh.
We have four, but it's Jennifer Ampin's birthday today, so we have a.
Sing.
This is just what you wanted to be doing.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear, may he have a birth. Happy birthday to you.
That's fancy.
Look at that.
Yeah.
You're done.
That's some good medicine right there.
It's all chocolate.
It needs to get.
Good.
Get a picture of the two of you.
Has some celery to go with that. Well, chocolate will take care of that for you.
Board meetings on the birthday.
There we go.
God, my dad had a.
Okay, well, we start our meeting with public comment.
Yeah, it's a.
I don't see anyone.
What's your little idea?
Pretty much.
I don't see anyone here for public. We do have some guests.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Can y'all turn on the video for the, um, for the conference room if possible?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the video has not started. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You missed the birthday visual.
There you go.
Oh, hi, I did miss the birthday visual. Hi, everybody.
He just come in. So I thought it would be useful for everybody to know who the people behind the magic, that is JLF. Um, Sanjaya, you want to pick a top here? That's cool, Sanjaya. Then I, um.
Point.
Oh, online. Yeah, why don't you just. Hi, excuse me, I have a salad in my mouth. I'm Jesse Friedman and, um, this crazy set of circumstances, I ended up questing and having this amazing, really extraordinary literary festival, international literary festival that originated in India, land in Boulder, Colorado, nine years ago, the Jai Prolift Festival. And, um, it, I hope that you all will make it, you all, you all should have received invitations from me for all the events.
Never miss it.
Yes, and Bini, Bini is an old friend, a young lovely friend of the festival.
I like being.
For many, many years, yeah, for many years. Um, it's an incredibly diverse event and it is joyful and profound. It's celebration and festive and moving and powerful at the same time. Um, bring up as much diversity to Boulder as Boulder ever sees. And all this magic is created by some of the people behind me. I'll let them introduce themselves, Teamwork Arts, the production company founded the festival 16 years ago in India. I'll let them take it from there.
Thank you, hi, everybody. Well, Sanjay will come and do a little bit more on the teamwork arts and the Jai Prolift Festival. Uh, but we've been here from twenty last, uh, from last nine years, this is the fact, the ninth edition of JF here in Boulder, at the Boulder Public Library. Each time we come here, it's just magical because it's not that, you know, it's, I was saying to, I think, uh, somebody this afternoon, it just feels like that, you know, just we have come back home, working with David, Kathy and all the colleagues at the Boulder Public Library. It's just that, you know, we've created something magical there. So thank you very much for choosing us. We choosing you, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it has been really amazing. Thank you.
Hi, sorry to bore you all, I mean, there's so many of us. I'm Shalupa and part of the, yeah, part of the team. I really actually invite all of you to come to Jaipur, which is the mothership. That's a 16-year-old festival next Feb. Festival's usually in January. It's a five-day festival that takes place. We've been lucky to have some of you at the festival and we hope all of you could really come just to see what it's all about. We're proud to have more than nine editions all over the world, other than the mothership. So we have festivals pretty much in each and every continent. We like growing it. Um, we believe it's important because those are the platforms that need to grow, where every side is allowed to speak, talk, and books, knowledge, literature, information is actually what is the keystone. So we try and keep that going, we try and keep. That's our bit, attempting to, you know, keeping our, the rotation going on within around here. So I really invite all of you to come to Jaipur. Next year, dates are first to the fifth of February, getting touch to pass while we're here for the next few days. And we'd love to share more. And I'm going to now hand it over to, oh, thank you so much. I mean, what could be better than coming to a meeting and get. A birthday party. So, yeah.
So just a big happy birthday and, uh, many congratulations. I know for five years, this has been something in the making and really congratulations to the Boulder Public Library for becoming a district library. We've been really very supportive of this and I know that it's going to be transformative. Uh, 10 years ago, when we first came to Boulder on the invitation of Jesse and Jules and Baruta, one of the reasons we agreed to stay in Boulder is primarily Joni and her husband who said that this is where you must be in America. But it was also just seeing the Boulder Public Library and the fact that it was across the Boulder Creek. And in many ways, it sort of addressed everything that we stand for. A place for knowledge and information or considered knowledge and information, not necessarily just WhatsApp knowledge and information, but knowledge from books and because of which perhaps we can push back on ignorance and by pushing back on ignorance, you can make a dent in hatred and push back on hatred and perhaps push, push back on violence. We've just finished JLF at Houston. And what was really interesting is that the university was very keen that we did a session on banned books. And as many of you know, Texas and Florida, along with the other states in the United States, I think 32 states, have banned books over 2,500 odd books since 2021, including three weeks ago Romeo and Juliet, uh, which has added to the list of banned books. And, uh, the, the libraries there weren't able to help us stand up and read from these banned books and explain to people why not to ban a book? Because the minute you start banning a book, you then start banning and othering people. And by othering people, you, you create a whole different climate of hatred and violence. This is what we've been doing across the world. Uh, teamwork runs about 35, uh, we've been, we're 35 years old. We run about 30-odd festivals in 72 cities and about 19 countries across the world. And when we decided to come to the United States primarily because the US still continues to be the highest number of our international visitors, followed by the UK and then followed by China, Germany and Uzbekistan and Indonesia and Saudi Arabia. Um, when we were shopping around where to go to, uh, if we thought of New York and we were in discussion with Tina Brown, uh, with Daily Beast and Newsweek, and we realized New York is a really difficult place to do anything. Went on to Chicago where the then Office of Mayor Daley, his international affairs head said to me, so Sanjoy, how did you come up with the name Jaipur? Is it named after perfume? And ha, ha, ha. No, it's a city, so we said maybe not, maybe not Chicago. Then we went on to Seattle where Rick Simonsen, Mimi Gates and Bill Gates Senior were very keen. They, they come out to the festival, or they used to come out to the festival every year and they were very keen for us to come there because they found the journey really far. Um, but Mimi Gates was like, can we do this festival for ourselves? I said, no, for us, it's very important to do it for the public, for younger people. And what was amazing in Houston last week was that as part of our outreach program with schools and, and, uh, communities which don't necessarily have access in the way that other communities do. We had two young people, uh, as part of our outreach program, come and read of what they made of peace. And, uh, one was, I think, nine or eight years old and the other person was 11. And just those two readings, along with the music and the poet laureate at, uh, of Houston at the Rothko Chapel, blew the roof of the house. It was amazing. And that's what our intent is, um, to continue to be partnering with David and Kathy and all of you uh, here in Boulder. Uh, congratulations again for being a best library of the whatever season or year or America or the world. But we do believe that libraries have to be at the forefront of, of all dissemination of knowledge through science and math and, and, and health and all of the issues that we talk about. For us, it's not just about fiction and poetry, it's really about the world. It's about looking at some of the local issues that you and Co. in, 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 in Colorado and in Boulder and Denver look at. And then what's different? Well, we look at the local issue, we look at a local writer and we match them with a, a, a national writer from the, from the Americas or North America and then bring in an international writer. And for the lack of a better description, it's white and brown and on yellow and pink and just every color of the rainbow. And I think you've been to, I think, every festival of ours. Uh, these are exciting conversations and we welcome you. Uh, I forget when the festival is, but it's this weekend, so please do come. It's not just about literature, it's about music, it's about celebrating excellence. It's about every point of view, it's not necessarily a point of view from a political discourse, but it's all points of view based on a book. And then we tell our visitors or our audiences to go back and they can then form whatever opinion that they wish to make. People have come from across the country to Boulder. This year too, we've got delegates flying in from Washington and Houston and the Bay Area and Seattle and Chicago uh, and different parts of America, uh, and Mexico. We've got some people coming from Mexico this year and New York. So look forward to welcoming you all. I don't think any of you stay too far away. So please come, even if it's for a session, or at least for the session on banned books, which happens on, uh. And to end, just thank you again, uh, thank you to what is or was the Library Foundation for their support in the early years. To the city that even when we were not registered, voted, the council voted to bring the festival here and, and provide some financial, much-needed financial resources. And despite even yesterday's meeting where some people in Denver said, a sponsor said, come to Denver. We can't sponsor you in Boulder. We're committed to be here, we love this city. We think it's an amazing place for ideas and thoughts, uh, to evolve a certain kind of, uh, uh, future for all of us. You know, so thank you all so much for being here and look forward to your continued support.
I'll take some of the other side.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, how does the, what size of this festival, this gathering compare to the other cities? And there's, cities are much larger, but I mean, do we pack a house here consistently?
Boulder is our biggest American whatever and our audience, it's the biggest program we have in the United States. And remember that apart from the people who come in physically here, which is the largest numbers, a couple of thousand every year, uh, the sessions that we do here are over two and a half days. Um, you know, we attract 25 million people watching something or the other that we put out. So when we look at Boulder, you're, you're going out to the rest of the world. And, um, like I said, in, in our latest analysis of three weeks ago, uh, in our top 25 cities, for example, there are two cities from Saudi Arabia, a place that we wouldn't have thought that people would be interested in literature or ideas or content, but they watch. You know, so remember it's both sides, it's everything that we record here goes out live. And JLF, Boulder, Colorado, the films and the sessions play across the world, not just restricted to Boulder here or in Colorado. And for whatever it's worth, uh, there's a day of JLF in Colorado as per the governor's notification.
Wonderful.
Years ago, I think it's on the 20th, we thought. Whatever it is, but we have a day of. JLF Day.
Thank you.
Well, if I could just make a request, if any of you are on social media, if you could sort of share it with your friends, um, across the board, program attendance has been lower than pre-COVID and we're trying to get the word out. Um, but we would really love other support and, I mean, if you have an email, newsletter, whatever method you have, please invite your friends because the dialogues that happen on stage as well as between each other, um, I think are quite profound. And, and also there's great music and, and other ways, reasons to come. And I'm sorry, I'm Kathy Lane with the programs at the library.
And the very, very last thing, I just forgot to say, you know, last year we signed, uh, I forget whether it's a communique or a memorandum or a declaration, it's one of these things with the United Nations, with one of our partners worldwide, we've been able to show that every one of our festivals is, is waste neutral and carbon net neutral and we have audits that happen. And that again is a way forward. The UN is very keen that if we can show that our festivals are like that, every UN conference has to then follow some of the steps that we follow, uh, outside of Texas. Texas doesn't believe that there is anything remotely called an environmental crisis. And every time I sort of point to plastic, that I, so, uh, but apart from Texas. But that's one of the things and we hope that collectively we'll be able to make that as a good practice here as well.
If I may just add that, uh, the three friends we have sitting in the room from Teamwork Arts represent, how many of you are here? 10, 10 at least came up from India and come every single year to produce the festival and do make the library look the way it normally does not look, and much it all did, except for the new yarns and the baffle. Um, and, um, I, 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 that all of that, the past several years, including all of us on JLF Colorado, have been rooting for the library district since library friends started working towards it and we're really deeply thrilled, not just for the possibilities for the festival, but for the fact that the library is going to have hopefully decent, decent funding, which has been so lacking for so long. Just, you know, like the most basic tenants of, uh, human culture seem to get the, the bottom of the ladder of funding, whether it's knowledge, arts and culture, free access to, um, information and what the library represents. So thank you all so much for coming on as a district.
I do.
One of, can I just say, I really think related to funding that we have to figure out is how to align this budget with SCFD funding?
I got it. Have it now.
Do you?
Yes, I have it now.
Okay, because that should also be a stable source in the future. I didn't see it on back.
It is.
First one. Okay.
Oh, I didn't see, yeah. It's the first, yeah. Um, yes, you qualified for SCFD last year.
That is, that's wonderful because that's, that's been a big issue.
I actually want to give you a little taste of something else and I'll probably get mad at people this, but very first, here I was getting to know Sanjoy, who Sanjoy Roy is, and there's no way I could explain to you who he actually is. Um, but there's a little taste, when he said he was coming to visit and just trying to decide if he would do the festival here. He said, oh, I've got to stop and see President Obama or something, but Obama's giving me an award or something.
It's the head. I get awards.
Yeah. Obama's giving, so President Obama, the national, uh, the president's council for the humanities gives one international award every year and that year they were giving it to, well, Sanjoy Roy.
It's on the head.
About 30 years ago, he began, during that year, he was a very famous filmmaker, he did lots of wedding and a namesake and one of my heroes, they're pals and they began trust in Bombay and Delhi, that house of street kids. 30 years ago, they put dozens of kids to college, he saved them from life of child labor or human trafficking or living on the streets. And so that, I want, I just want you to know the sentiment and the nature.
And, and our head of production is doing all of this beautiful stuff. He's actually from Zulam Malakros, he finished his masters, he joined us and he's one of our seniors.
It's really beautiful.
So I think we're going to leave you all. Best wishes.
Thank you.
And see you on your weekend.
Those people we ever have at our meetings.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay. All right. Now we're into the most exciting part of the meeting, the approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any additional changes? I sent in a few editorial comments earlier. Okay, we get a motion to approve. Pam.
Okay.
And exceptions, all those in favor? I, Jan, is your hand up? Okay, that goes unanimously. Sylvia is not on tonight, so we'll defer this. Um, now that we are finally going to be able to start actually using our funding, uh, we decided to start putting a treasurer's report as a regular item in our regular meeting. Today is our regular meeting, but Sylvia is not here, so we will forego that and try and do that next week. Uh, like.
When it, so the money's in the bank account or?
The bank account is established.
Okay.
It can be transferred to the bank.
Okay.
Yet paid bills.
Okay.
On it, um, we're waiting to hear back from them, set up training for staff.
Oh, okay, so.
That kind of thing, so, um, I know we sent the paperwork, uh, to the county, I don't know that the county, I didn't get a.
So you've already get a part of the process of moving things over.
Everything is, uh, everything is well in the way, including the, I think, the process for P cards, paper cards that we'll use, that's library staff use, so that process is well underway and anticipate transitioning from city P cards to district P cards, probably sometime in, I don't know, October?
October.
Yeah.
Johnny, one of the things I asked for at the last meeting was to see the invoice of our legal counsel and she's, I thought she said it was somewhere, but I, I didn't find it.
Yeah, I only have, I don't have a copy of them.
I do, um. I can bring that to the next package. So I, I received an invoice several weeks ago, I turned it over to finance. We're not paying a lawyer yet, I know, for reasons that are just complicated because we don't want to use that loan that the city gave us to pay the lawyer because the city has a whole process by which anybody can hire a lawyer and, and this was not done, too many of those processes. And so we're waiting until we actually have a bank account and, well, we have a bank account and we have money in it, but we can't actually pay it yet, but we will do so, uh, forthwith. If you'd like to see the invoices, um, I don't have a digital copy, I don't believe, I have a print copy, we can sure send about. Yeah.
That'd be great.
It is a fiduciary responsibility of the board, not the director. Does it relate, I mean, we've hired the legal counsel, not.
Yeah, I had intended to address that, but since she's not here tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I would think it, he is working on behalf of both the library and the board. Unless there is a conflict between, you know, then we would have to figure that out. So I, I had a question about that later too, so I will, uh, not about your bill or anything, but just about. We'll just get to it later. The trustees.
On the edge of our seats, Chuck.
Yeah.
I know, so we will, we, we will have in the budget process, you will have a line in your 2024 budget, which will say legal and perhaps maybe it'll say legal and administrative services. You will approve of a lump sum of money from that budget and approve of contracts, should you hire a different lawyer or stay with Senator Vanderwell. Then the payments out of that is not something that we would come back to you on each invoice for. You would have approved the budget, uh, if we were entering into a contract that exceeded whatever amount you choose to set, which that will be, right now it's $30,000, but I think when we actually have a budget and accounts, we'll have to revisit that in terms of all your bylaws. Um, but any contract that is above the amount that you previously set, we will bring that back for your discussion. But the money you've already, um, you approved of the money when you approved of the budget, I believe you approved of $18,570,000, $75,000, which is not what we have, but nevertheless you approved of the high number based on the estimate that the county treasurer had provided to you. Uh, our 2023 budget, probably more like 70,000. Nevertheless, you approved of the expenditures within that.
And I assume that we'll have a standard form treasury report, monthly treasury report that will start rolling out here um, once we're actually able to get our arms around it and get things up and running.
Yes.
Hopefully next month, that would be great.
Yeah, hopefully, I don't know. If next month, you know, we, we have, we have these statement accounts, you know, we do not have any software.
Yeah.
Spreadsheets, and so we will, uh, as I said last week, we will be bringing to you a financial software recommended venue in the next couple of weeks. Um, at that point, it's probably several months before that software is actually implemented. In the meantime, we'll be rolling out QuickBooks in the interim until we actually get the software for the financial systems.
So a question out of ignorance, though, um, it seems like to me, and I may be completely off base on this, that the report coming out of your financial software system is probably more in the weeds than we would do. Our report would be a level above that. Um, I mean, this is something that Sylvia and she, that's what I'm thinking, is that we sort of pull out the things that are the board level uh, review that are probably above the treasury or whatever. So anyway, we can figure that out.
My report is next and I am pleased to introduce, I, we have several things, but we'll start off uh, with Margot Josephs, uh, with Leadline. Uh, Leadline is a consulting firm we've been in contact with several weeks ago for project management, uh, both around the scope of the entire transition. And then more specifically on a couple of different, uh, programs that'll be rolling out that are kind of key, uh, functional items, the HRIS and payroll system as well as the IT transition. So Margot Josephs, take it away.
Hi, Ron, it's nice to meet you. I've had some meetings and this is my personal thing, so I'm happy to be here. I'm trying to minimize, if I get that side of the screen. Oh, okay. Um, so I am Margot, I, uh, work with Leadline. We are a soft consulting firm of three women who all used to work for the state of Boulder. And with the last three to five years, we all left, it's a different, and now are on a team where we are working on project management support for local governments around the front range and a few large projects with the state of Denver. And so we were really able to, uh, support this project. The timing was perfect in, with our capacity and where the team was and with our skill set and our background. So it's been really, um, excellent to come on board and get to know the team and try to bring some organization and coordination and kind of high-level, uh, project management to the project overall. A lot has already been done and there's still more to do, but, uh, I'm confident that we'll get there. So what I wanted to share a bit today was just, um, a high level so that you all know kind of where we're coming from, our approach, that how we're looking at this project and the work we have to do over the next couple of months. Um, and then I'll share a little bit about more detail in terms of how we're actually working with the team, um, what kind of our roles and responsibilities look like in relation to supporting the project. And then lastly, share a high-level overview of a project roadmap that kind of shows you how we're working to put all the pieces together and keeping eyes on what's happening. And so we are coming to this project knowing that the library obviously has a very clear mission and there is a, amongst that mission, there is a short-term mission and goal of helping through this transition. So for everything we're working on, we are going to. So for everything we're working on, we are going to stay focused on committing same commitment to the mission. Um, and ensuring that the, really the public, things remain the pub, the same or improved for the public experience. Um, we also are trying to ensure that we're approaching the project with a view for future success. So while we obviously have a short term goal of getting all the details figured out and having the doors open and the computers work and all the things happen by January, really the goal is to set up the district for success for the long term. So whatever possible, looking to establish processes or, or systems or plans that will help district grow in the future. Um, recognize that, you know, things are always changing and adapting and we're trying to contain, we're trying to maintain positive morale. There's a lot of change happening for the staff who are involved in the project and not involved. And so trying to manage and keep an eye on how we can ensure that people are confident that the project's gonna happen and going to be successful and be in everyone's best interest. Um, keeping an eye on risk management and mitigation. So that's what, one of some of the values are of having kind of an outside party who's not so deep in the weeds, keeping the eye on where things could go wrong, anticipating that either with its external vendors or just internal timeline issues. So always looking at that and then decision making quality. So ensuring that we're identifying and finalizing when the leadership needs to be involved and how and building out adequate time to do that. So Leadline's role in this project is listed here. And as I mentioned, we are keeping an eye on the high level strategic timeline oversight and we'll get into the little bit more details about next. Um, we are coming in with also some management support for vendors, contractors and consultants. As you know, and you'll continue to see, there's a several kind of external parties who are now starting to be on board and really get involved with the projects. And through experiences that we've had supporting projects like this in the past, sometimes just simply the coordination of all these external, all these external clients, consultants firms can be a job in and of itself. And so that's a role that we are going to help play and make sure that we're being efficient with the staff's time. We're being clear about help, keeping them to the deadlines that they're saying that they're meeting, you know, running timelines across the board. Um, project status updates and reporting, um, so we're doing that internally. We've started to do that internally and can continue to spread, provide updates to you in a more cohesive way that kind of gives the, continues to give the big picture conversation. Risk management, we talked about internal external communication guidance. So this is something that we started working on the last week or so is along with all of the strategy and the thought put in needed and that's being put into all of the actual tactical things. It's as important to think about how the communications plan essentially will align with that. So we're starting to roll that out and more to come on that. But that's also going to include some recommendations and further conversation with you all about how you're going to the public with your, the newsletters that go out and things like that, making sure that the next few months, which was really the critical time in getting this done, that there is consistent communications that's aligned with what's happening. And it's at the right amount and the right cadence, right? And not too much information, that's not relevant, but important things that are relevant to the, to the appropriate audience. And so really focusing on the staff communications and then layering in the extra communications. Um, project team coordination, so we're meeting with the team regularly. Um, we have kind of established the core team of who really is working primarily on a lot of the transition work and then identifying how the rest of the staff can and will be involved if appropriate over the next few months. And then alleviating workload as to best managed resources. So there's, this is partly, I think, the benefit of the fact that both myself and two of my, both my colleagues have worked for the city. We can jump in on things that, because we have background knowledge and we can kind of seamlessly engage, interact with either other staff or other departments in a way that I think allows us to kind of support and backfill pieces of the project that hopefully will alleviate the workload. So as you obviously know, these women and many of the team have a lot on their plate. And so it's been possible, we try to just jump in and do some of the work if we can. So those are kind of what we are working on doing and that's how we're gonna do the work over the next few months. So what I wanted to share here is just a high level overview. You all obviously are very aware of most of these things, because a lot of things have been decisions that you've made. But I just wanted to show a visual of kind of what this project looks like from a roadmap over the next few months. And so as the really main parts I wanted to call out here um, are the big pieces in yellow. Um, you know, the next three months are going to be critical in implementation of some key, some key systems and tools. And so this is just a helpful tool to both communicate to people who aren't in the weeds necessarily, to give them a sense of what's happening and how these things are interrelated. So I just want to call out the financial piece. This kind of goes to what you were just talking about, when the rollout of the finances, of the new financial system is going to happen, what happens to the interim, what needs to be informed, what, what the inputs are for that, what needs to happen so that we can get the information out of it that we need. Um, what you can't see over there is the transition to the new ERP, which is likely going to happen towards the new year. Um, and obviously the budget development's happening now and so many things inform that staffing, all sorts of things, and so you can see how that's playing out. In terms of technology, um, and this is the next thing on the agenda, so we'll talk about that soon. ERP is.
What's ERP, sorry?
Uh, enterprise resource planning, planning, it's like. Yeah, it's like a software.
Okay, thanks.
Financial management.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, sorry, there's not a lot of space to put all the words up here.
Got it, yeah.
Um, so as you can see, the IT migration is starting to happen and so more on that in, at the next point. But seeing how that layers in with the next line here of the pay velocity implementation, which is the payroll system. And those things are going to be very interconnected. And so ensuring that the timing between the rollout and the, all the pieces within that are sequenced in the right order is important. And that's the thing that we're having our eyes on. Um, and then facilities piece, obviously, last Thursday's conversation with council was very informative and helpful to inform, to tell us kind of what route might need to be taken in terms of facilities and asset planning and management. Um, and so based on that conversation, we can start building out what the next couple looks like related to that. And then I talked a little bit about internal and external communication plans and how we're, we're gonna come back, likely we'll come back to, I don't know, a couple of you, maybe you'll get some feedback on who the right people I talked to about how to align communication that comes from your team as well as what goes to staff and making sure that all of that is in alignment with this, right? So people know what they need to know, but not too much. So that's kind of what we've been working on. Um, and I would love to answer any questions if you have or talk through anything if you'd like, but really the purpose of me being here was just to introduce myself and know what we're working on and how to help me support the transition.
So this is a lovely, lovely piece of art. Um, could you share this slide with all of us? I'm sincere, it's wonderful.
Sure.
You've been all happy to get charged. And Cara and Benita are our communication support.
Okay. Excellent. Were the answer to that question.
Great, great to know. And one piece that I didn't get into the weeds on, but I just want you to know is, um, we have a couple behind the scenes project management tools that we've been using. Um, monday.com is one and luckily our multiple vendors who are working with now, we're doing a lot of implementation, also use that system. And so that will give us an opportunity to have insight into different um, stages of the process and tasks and all sorts of things. It's a huge system of lots of fun images and colors. And so that's something that we could, like, if you wanted to talk more about detail of a particular project or aspect of it, we could dive into details if that's appropriate or needed at some point. But it's a new tool that we're bringing on to help, but this is kind of the thirty thousand level version of that.
How long are you on board for?
Um, does, through the end of the year and we'll see how it goes. I mean, I think it were, you know, our team has, this is a big priority project for us. We're actually on a very similar project with the state of Colorado with their judicial district. And so, uh, we like these kind of projects, they're really, we love projects that are big scary, like extra work on top of everyone's workload that no one knows what to do and there's no clear owner of it. And we like to come in and help with that, because that's the space that we feel like to be in. So, um, we'll see how, you know, we'll, hopefully if we're all successful, then things are working smoothly and everyone's happy come January, February. Um, and we'll see what happens.
On the earlier slide, there's the ref before that one. Maybe that's it. So the, um, change, adoption and positive morale. So just talk about how you typically see and what you would be doing here related to measuring and gathering staff feedback.
Yeah, so that's a good question. So obviously a lot of staff engagement are happening already and has been for like through the handbook. Obviously, I don't know, there was, you know, staff feedback opportunities prior to that other pieces. Um, and so what really for that piece in the big buckets here, the IT migration and the pay velocity implementation, there's opportunities throughout each of those, those rollouts to engage staff in different ways and get their feedback, whether it is on how something is, should work or how they might want it to work or how it's been set up and what they think about it. And so through simply staff engagement and asking them the questions in the right ways with the right um, lanes of providing that feedback, um, that would simply, we believe that does in, increase staff around, because they feel like they know what's going on and what's part of the project. They might not like the answers and that's okay. And that's how we will come out and say that, obviously. But, um, having given the opportunity to to strategically gather staff feedback is one of the ways that we do that.
Is it one on one or is it in groups or work groups kind of thing or what?
Um, well, it really depends on the project. I mean, for this project, given the timeline, what we're talking about, um, for the pay velocity law, for example, is we'll likely build different staff teams at different levels. So there'll be different like state, different groups of teams that will need to provide feedback, different things. So that might be in a group setting. And then really a lot of this will be supervisor support. So ensuring that the supervisors have all the adequate information so that they can then have those one on one conversations if needed. Um, it's going to be kind of what's needed when, based on the feedback that's been received. That's different there. Anything else?
I have a quick question. Sorry. Go for it, Jen. Margot, thanks for, for that presentation. That was really, that was a really big overview. Clearly you're doing a ton of work in the background. I, I wondered if, um, some of the stuff on your kind of timeline or your Gantt chart involves subcommittees that all of us are pretty involved in. Will you be the one to let us know as we are behind on things or, or, you know, so will you sort of communicate that to David who will, you know, tactically communicate it to us?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. Right now I have been, and you know, this is all relatively, we're just getting started, but, um, we have been working pretty closely with Jen and Amy and Antonia as like kind of the daily contacts. And then at least once or twice a week, I check to talk about some elements that might have to come to you or that we might need aligning on. Um, this was actually built partly based on your agenda that I know you're working on. So that's one of the inputs that I use for this. Um, but yes, I would say as we continue to get a better handle on things and as the timeline starts to shrink and the deadlines start to get more critical, you likely will start hearing from us via David, most likely, about if decisions need to be made sooner than, than what you're already planning on. Some, for example, like policy decisions or anything that really would inform a critical piece of the next step in one of these implementations, that absolutely will, we would um, make sure that that's known and we would get the information needed and provide the deadline for that as soon as we know, if it's out of line with what you currently have on the plan.
I didn't want to see like Margot Joseph's name in my inbox, meaning like you are in trouble. Yeah, just, I was just going to say to avoid confusion, I strongly recommend that we keep that communication to David, to us. Because then, yeah, then we don't start messing things up. Sam, you had a question.
A little similar, but, um, and it may be too early for you to say whether this is a realistic timeline. I are concerned that our senior staff in particular, doing a heck of a lot of work. Yeah. Don't want to, um, that unrealistic, exact date.
Yeah, that's something we've talked about and I, you know, I, I do feel like, um, this is a realistic timeline. I, it seems reasonable, especially we had our kickoff meeting with Payocity two weeks ago. I think that was a fabulous choice, they're very organized, they gave us full confidence that they can roll out this project in the timeline that's needed. And furthermore, we highlighted the areas that were priorities. And so that's where, um, you know, having the foresight of kind of the next three months, we told them we need recruitment and and hiring to be the top priority. So on all the lists that, you know, Payocity does, all these things, we prioritize those things. So now when they went back to their project team to build out the project plan for the library, those were the two things that are happening first. And that was based on our knowledge of what needs to happen subsequently. Um, so I think that's doable. I think there are some pieces that might have to be, you know, we're gonna either know we're going to do that in twenty twenty four or we might have to make a decision for now and then revisit it. Um, but overall, I don't think, I don't see any, with the information we've learned in the last two weeks from some of, from both the IT migration process, the pay velocity process, um, yeah, I, I think it's reasonable. It's gonna, it is a lot of work, but I think it's reasonable. And that's one of the reasons why we're also seeing if, if and when there's opportunities to engage staff in the right way to hopefully alleviate workload. That's an option, um, if it's done correctly and right with the right staff, the right staff. Yeah.
Any other questions? Jen, anything from you? Nothing else from you. Great, well, thank you, thank you very much. Um, this is very exciting, we're glad you're here. Love the Gantt chart, so yeah.
Yeah, so if, if we do, if there are delays, you know, you'll hear it from me. We are going as fast as we can. And it is all conditioned upon those main elements, right? So making the staff transition by January one informs what we are doing currently with the benefits and handbook. It has everything to do with pay velocity, which while it is a payroll system, it is most used as a time entry system, right? This is where staff have to enter in their time and record their training and all of those other things. So what elements of it we roll out on first is like recruiting to hire people and getting it so people can actually enter their time so that we can pay them accurately. Uh, some of the things we'll have to, we won't implement probably by January. Uh, staff may see shortcomings in the system initially, wishing you could do all the things that Workday does now. Um, but we will hopefully find all the capacities in the system as we work through it for the next year. Same with the finance system, right? So the financial software, it's pretty critical, right? Like it's, it's pretty important, uh, for us in the sense of like preparing your budget. We're doing it outside of that process this year because that is not mission critical and we can present the budget to you using spreadsheets and lay it all out. So that, and with graphic images and this kind of thing. My hope is that ultimately the financial software, we can plug in all the numbers, it's going to spit out format that's going to work mostly what you guys want to see. So, um, but yeah, I think it's all, it's all moving along quickly. And tonight is another one of those huge, uh, steps that we're bringing for you. And that is to consider the contract with, uh, Focus Connect for the IT support and transition. And Doug asked me on, I don't know if it was Sunday morning or Saturday night to do a present. To do a presentation and so I put one together.
Sorry.
I'm not a, and please don't critique my PowerPoint. I'm not a, as you can imagine, I'm not much of a PowerPoint guy.
I'm working on it.
Uh, we'll bring that up. I took a look at it. Uh, again, we, we ran through pretty quick from August eighth was the date which, uh, the separation was described to us. There were a number of surprises, uh, in that description, but, um, Amy and I sat down and rewrote the RFP in a matter of basically six hours, got it out that week. Um, we sent it to, you can go ahead and flip to the next slide.
Yeah. We're trying to. It in display mode.
So we had, uh, we had eight recommended firms that came to us via the city, via other libraries and via, um, but connections that exist previously. Of those eight, uh, we sent them each the, uh, we sent them each the RFP and had extensive discussions prior to sending the RFP. So I probably spoke to each of the firms once or twice. Uh, in one instance, I guess three times. Uh, we sent them the RFP, at which point then we solicited questions, uh, from each of those consultants. I wrote down, it was a hundred and twenty questions, but it was actually.
Hundred and sixty three.
We received a hundred and sixty three questions back from the, from the eight recommended vendors, which we then in turn answered, the, the questions were due on Friday. we then in turn answered. The questions were due on Friday. Amy answered most of them with the help of Don Mulvey from City IT by that Friday afternoon. We followed up and completed. We answered all the questions, I believe, by Monday. We received six proposals, each of which were reviewed. Four of those proposals I would characterize as complete in the sense in which they answered the questions that we provided, we asked in the, in the RFP. And just to refresh your memory from the RFP, those were around building an entire new network, migration of Office 365. And the third part, ongoing maintenance and operation of the security in the network for the library. And so four of them did address, did have answers for each. Some of those, we would not characterize as full answers. We characterized two of the proposals as comprehensive in nature. By that, I mean, they describe how they would actually respond to each of these questions and what they proposed to do. And of those two comprehensive proposals, we have selected one and brought it to you tonight. That finalist is Focus Connect. There is a red line draft, the contract before you receive it for your consideration. I'll let you guys weigh in. But I think in my conversation with Kim, most of the red line is instrumental and not substantive. There are several substantive changes and there will be more substantive changes throughout the completion of this contract because none of the prices, we haven't bought the materials yet. Buying these things, we're shopping. The consultant is shopping for products to get a basic idea of what they're going to cost. But like last week, she didn't have the tax ID number. And that's what we're not getting the tax off. We're not going to have to pay state or federal tax. So those prices will come in. Each of the finalists had strengths. Focus Connect was, I think, the top ranked on four of the people. And then on Cara and Doug's list were ones they thought we should interview. Focus Connect is a female owned business. The other finalists, which we did consider, their initial projected costs were two and a half times what you see in contracts before. That didn't rule them out, but there were questions about it. And so the determination we made was to move forward with Focus Connect, which had an equally comprehensive approach. And well, from the interview that I had had with them and that Amy had had with them, we felt like it was better fit for projects. And so we interviewed them together with Andy, Doug, Cara and Don Mulvey. They were able to satisfactorily answer the questions. We elected to move forward. So I'm happy to open it up for questions.
David?
Yes.
Can, can you say more about what you mean by the changes that you made to the contract, you and Kim made to the contract were instrumental and not substantive?
It's more around, it's more around state law. So I don't, I think you should have had a red line version in your packet.
Yeah.
So they're mostly items that say like, we can't committed, be committed indefinitely. We ask for a renewal of the contract. The termination processes that we put in place are pretty standard for state governmental entities. So each, each party can notify the other in a, in a period of time. It's not substantive in the sense in which instead of us, you know, wanting to migrate Office 365, we want to shift to a Google environment. So it's nothing.
Okay.
Okay. The cost on the individual items has, will change. We don't have locked in numbers right now. So that eight, I'm not looking at it, but eight sixty-nine, eight seventy.
Eight sixty-two, I think.
Eight fifty-two figure is an estimate. We do believe that we'll probably come in right around that because we will get tax non, our tax exempt number will bring some of the cost down, but we may find that some of the other products may cost us a little bit more. We did add a few items as well to the list that we had not originally put into the RFP. And that's around staff and public computing and a few other things that they're added in that were not in that original list for the bit. So, yeah, so the kind of the bag, right? The price is roughly eight sixty, eight seventy, I thought, for the startup cost. That startup cost includes the licensing for three years for the network. There is then a $30,000 cost per month in terms of security and network administration, as well as some support, although we're negotiating that and they've agreed to bring that cost down slightly. We're leaving it in place for now because we don't have those staff hired yet to do that work that we're hoping to do. But I think through the course of the year's transition, we may find that there's some savings that monthly cost as well. In comparison to what, you know, again, the budget that you approved and didn't ask for any details, but that I kind of been operating under the assumption that would be the cost is based off of what the city estimates internal cost allocation to be, plus all of the things that Amy and her team run with regard to IT and library related applications that run through the system, plus our ILS, which we've outsourced to Marmot. So for that, the cost that this is coming in at is less than what I anticipated it would be if you compare it as that kind of an apples, apples to apples to the internal cost allocation. So the provision of hardware and software for the network and security, which the city provides, and they do provide us some other things, but Amy and her team do primarily run all of the library applications. It is a, you know, it's a savings. So I, I think that's really good news. That's also why the one contract that was two and a half times more expensive than this didn't initially scare me at all. I just thought like, well, that's really what it costs. I don't, I didn't know what it was going to cost. And so I wasn't totally turned off by them by the prices. So I'm happy to throw it open. And Andy's here tonight. Amy's here tonight. Don Mulvey is not. So the substantive question clearly that directed at the vendor really came from Andy and Don. I don't know where Andy wound up. I know in the rankings, he had Focus Connect very high. I know that Amy and Don Mulvey have been ranked as the number one candidate in the bidding process. And then subsequently, after the interview, felt very comfortable. And ultimately, they will be working with Don Mulvey to the IT and Amy's show.
And I just wanted to add one thing to what you said about context of costs. When Benita and I met with the city last time and we were talking about this IT transition and how it would happen, their estimate was one and a half million that they would have to pay to do this transition. If it was on their side for lecture, we were talking about how much we'd have to pay back. So that might give you some context for where people were looking at this coming in.
Is the, one of the questions I had was the, this concept of like, what's in the contract on costs is going to change as we start actually acquiring things? Is that, is it spelled out somewhere? I didn't see it, but it's eighty pages or whatever. So it could be.
There's a secondary piece that I did not print it out. So she actually priced out individually, and I'm not sure that's in the contract.
Is there like a sentence that says like, these prices might change over the course of the actual procurement process?
I don't think so, but we can put that.
I think we should spell that out. Just because like, we all know that's true, but like, it's just as it goes. I don't, there's always will be like a change order every single time, right? So that would be, that's all.
Can I tag on to that? Because I had a, really my only question on this. I'm used to contracts that are either time and materials or performance based. How are we evaluating performance in this? Is this a performance based contract? What, I mean, how do we know they're doing a good job? What happens if it's a dispute about whether they're not doing it right? Do we have some standards for that or can you speak to that?
Well, it's, I think it was a train question. The contract is mostly purchasing and installing things. So it's applications, hardware, all of that. And there's a timeline getting it done.
We did break the cost out for the time that their staff is going to be taking for implementation. We'll pay 50% now and then 50% at the end of the project. So we have some leverage there if we.
What's the standard for determining the performance issues? That's kind of what I'm after.
I think it'll come in the testing, honestly. I mean, so building a network, I don't think is overly complicated, right? So and that's something that in a design phase, you can determine, right? So they have a design of what the network is. We were basically replacing systems server with another system server. So it shouldn't be that complicated. Ultimately, the migration of Office 365, which I was worried about in all of the contracts, they explained it to us in a manner that sounded plausible and that the tools are different than what I remember from five, six years ago. And so they did not see it as a major issue. I'm still withholding judgment on that because, you know, I get that a lot of the, a lot of the structure comes from the protocols that you have established. It's mostly overlaid from one or two systems. And then you have a ton of different things which rely on those protocols. And we'll see, maybe again, the testing phases, does everything come over or are we scrambling? And we do have a plan B that we've talked over with Margot about the mad scramble and a bucket of flash drives. And we're asking staff to transition some of their own data. I have no doubt, I mean, I, I have no reason to doubt that from the moment they get started and the materials arrive, we can determine probably within 30 days if the network is going to work, even without the network having plugged in. They will be testing the system that they've developed in an, in a, in an environment which is found in libraries. So they will be testing precisely the programs that they've set up to see if it's working.
Yeah. Just to add to that, she said that basically they would pull everything off site, test it all off site, bring it in, drop it. And like, it's good, I think we're gonna have some downtime for a few days. And then they put the plug in to the new thing and it should be ready to go. That's how she explained it.
So the burden is on them to make sure things work?
Yes.
And that's kind of what I'm after. For in the middle of something, they say, oops, this is a lot more complicated. You know, that's when you get into big fights.
Yeah, right.
So.
I would think we would know that during the testing.
They're, in the end, they're delivering an operational system.
Okay.
So it is a performance based in that sense. Okay, good. Thank you. Sam?
Yeah, Amy or Andy, I, I'm curious how they, you know, if the city says 1.5, the other vendor is like over two, how do they come in so much less? Like where are their cost savings?
So I can say that the 2.5 was, was way over engineered to what we needed as a smaller entity, overselling, I would say a little bit. I don't know what the city, how the city got those numbers, but I feel like the, that using our education discount, which the city is not able to use, using a nonprofit discount, which the city is not able to use, I think that's bringing costs of the hardware down and the software down. And then people time, it just comes down to what we pay the city staff and what Focus Connect pays their staff. So.
The city system is probably going to be way more complex than what, when I, when Don was here, they have, you know, seemed like much more kind of infrastructure in place than what we love.
I'd just say in general, there's a huge amount of variability in IT costs and it's about efficiency. Like, you can do things a lot more, a lot less efficiently and double or triple your cost and large corporations will happily pay that. So, I mean, across the bids we got, like this wasn't even the lowest bid. We had one other bid that came in below this. So you get like a spread of three X across a set of bids to the same RFP. And, you know, it's kind of price discrimination at some level. Some people are willing to pay for the extra. Some people won't.
Yeah, I think too, like, it, it's weird. The, the $2 million one had also a lot of software suites. And again, that I don't necessarily think they're included in Focus Connects, like different things. But I don't even know, they do different things, like security and things like that. We still have the security, but it's just a different system. And I also, like, this also includes the 30K a month and make, you know, the support. So I mean, when you add that in, you're at 1.1 million, you know, for the first year. So I don't know what was in the city's thing. And then with the 30K, does that start when we, okay.
If that starts October 1st is when.
Okay. And they're going to start buying computers and start loading them anyway. So the, the other piece I, city's gonna maintain the Wi-Fi, we think?
Well, this is, this is something that I, I hope will come up in the course of your IT discussion.
Yeah.
And I know, I know that the city has considered it.
Yeah.
And so if they offer to be even temporarily, the ISP for the library for, let's say, three months, that's the max, say yes. If they say six months, that's, they say a year, if they say indefinitely, whatever they say, say yes. We want that desperately to be at least temporarily on the ISP. So we have some time to shop around with, you know, the firms. And we don't know all the firms. Amy pointed out, like, you know, beyond Level 3 and CIO and all these other firms, there are other firms that are operating in Boulder in, in a, in a corporate and business environment that we could potentially lock into and get an ISP instead of.
They've already offered that piece.
Just to make sure I'm tracking here, again, you talked about Wi-Fi and you're talking about ISP.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so Wi-Fi has a public facing component.
Yeah.
Boulder Connect. And we have talked to the city about maintaining that.
Right.
And what you're talking about is the internal ISP, right? And the internal Wi-Fi. So I think they're kind of two different components. Are you saying we're hoping we can continue to keep them both the same set integrated or?
The city would be the provider for our internet service. And so the city is the internet service provider for the county, currently county government, as well as, you know, these buildings serve as a hub on the gigapop line for a lot of different services. It's broken up and then the city belongs to the gigapop front range network or something like that. They, on our behalf, requested that we could join. There was some confluff about that. And so it sounds probably not likely right away that we could join the gigapop network. And so then the city could stay on it and provide our internet service, like, just like CIO would do, or just like.
Is that in the current idea? I thought, I thought we said it was.
Oh, I think.
Lots of luck.
There is language in the current idea addressing, addressing that staying on and even joining the, whatever it is, the consortium that's.
Okay. Well, it's something we need to think about.
Yeah. General brings.
To Doug's original question about Wi-Fi though, this proposal assumes the city Wi-Fi goes well. Like literally all of the equipment the city's using to provide Wi-Fi in the library right now gets ripped out to make room for the equipment you're paying for here.
Okay. And what happens to public Wi-Fi?
We'll be providing it with this equipment.
Just won't be connectable or something. I think that's a problem. Because I think it's going to be very confusing for people to step outside the building and be on one Wi-Fi system and then be inside the building on another Wi-Fi system. That's why we asked whether the city could continue in that.
I just wondered, is there a Wi-Fi zone? Like it doesn't live like outside the building, right? It's like in some kind of range that you'd still.
Well, they're on a patch to the building up here. So I think, yeah, in their inside, the transceivers.
But if, if we were on a separate system, how far does that go? Like, is it really?
It's probably 30 feet. I mean, 60 feet, maybe.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It goes as far as, right? Like, there's nothing stopping you from putting your antennas on the roof of this building and serving a competing Wi-Fi network in the areas around the library. The RFP didn't include that. So like, that's probably a cost increase. But like, these are all possibilities.
Yeah. My understanding is that, that, like, response, like the RFP response in the contract would allow them to put in a totally new system, but that it's still an open question with whether the city is an option as well. So I think, I think it's like, they can do it themselves completely, but if we don't need to, then great. Like, then we'll go through the city.
That's my understanding. Right now, Connect Boulder goes basically from here to 13th Street, right? Anybody can get on there anywhere in that range. And I think personally, it's helpful to the community to maintain that. But that's still to be determined by the city.
Yeah, I, you know, we have the capacity to do it. Otherwise, for the user, it would be a seamless experience. They're not going to know. They, you know, we don't have to necessarily put in the same kind of protocol that the city does that requires you to log in about every 30 seconds and re-log in or a lot of that stuff. So for a user who came into the library, especially if you used it once before and asked it to recognize wireless, you can walk from Boulder Connect into the library and then be on a wireless without ever seeing. Boulder Connect into the library and then be on a wireless without ever seeing a blip. And, and subsequently walk back out. When you get Boulder's network, you're gonna be asked to log in and again, because you have to every single time. You cannot auto, you cannot set Boulder's thing to auto-connect. But you can for almost every wireless system. Like, I don't know your experiences, I'm on my wireless all the time, you can walk all over Boulder and never lose a wireless connection. But it's not all connect Boulder, you're picking up various other wireless signals.
What do they use in the recs? Connect Boulder, okay. And, okay.
Johnny, I mean, I think to David's point, your concerns about usability here are, I mean, they're valid, but they are probably most impactful to folks that are new, right? Like it's, you set it up once and David's right, your phone will switch between your Wi-Fi networks happily as you move out of range. My recommendation to David, you guys can take this or leave this, is that long term, if it hoots the library to be under control of this, because if you think about what the library really does, like it's an information provider. And this Wi-Fi is like quickly becoming the primary way to leverage price information. So that's a very critical library component that I think you're gonna wanna have direct control over longer term. Having the city do it like for some period of time to let you make this network look nicer, like that's one thing, but I do think ultimately it's a kind of a critical library function. You're gonna wanna have more direct control over that.
Long term becomes a strategy and I know we're not there yet, but in the next few years, we might, right? Like so. One of the big, most successful pilot programs we have, one of the best outreach programs we have is Derek, they can provide wireless hotspots to places where we know people don't have access to affordable Wi-Fi. And to Boulder, that's only seven percent of the population. We know basically we're about four or five percent. It is possible, it is feasible even for us to provide, if we have our own network, to provide them with free internet access year round at all times in their house. Without having a special device that they have to check out of the library. I'm talking about Noble and the manufacturing company. So it's not something that we're deciding tonight. We cannot do it obviously with the city's network. All of the city could feasibly mount an antenna, I suppose upon Noble and do the same thing. They could have mounted it on other city owned or California pools for all I know, like, and provided that service seven years ago. It just hasn't been done. So it's just something for us to I think we wanna have the capacity. Whether we implement, whether we say go right now, the city has to get their stuff out right away. That's, that's for you to decide the I G A, but for us to have the capacity to be able to do this. The other thing.
I don't disagree with Amy there. I think, I think all of that. My only concern is just confusing people here in the civic area. And that sounds like it's more the city's issue than ours. I mean, I don't know why they have to have it as complicated as they can to get on and off Connect Boulder. Although C E does the same thing. But, you know, that's something to figure out. As we're sitting here also, I'm remembering when we were doing the focus groups in Gunbarrow back when we were doing the master plan, that seems to be another area where there are a lot of people, in that case, older people who did not have access to Wi-Fi because they were looking to the library as the place where they could get more of that kind of thing. So just put that out there because it popped back into my brain. No, you guys do what we need to do. You know, we'll figure it out.
And there is fiber in Gunbarrow. That, that'll matter a lot to us when we when we cite a library in Gunbarrow is our ability to be on fiber to provide high speed internet access. I mean, there's other ways to do it, but I think that will be a consideration.
Just related, can somebody maybe this side could comment on if the city pursues and gets this broadband, you know, platform out there, how would that impact this?
I, I think this probably gets back to what David was saying about like the city might ultimately still be your internet provider. That doesn't mean they're running the Wi-Fi. That means they're the ones handing you the fiber plug that then connects to everything else. If the city continues to expand the municipal fiber network, I think it just opens up additional options there. It probably makes even more sense for them to be your ISP longer term because now they're gonna be everybody's ISP. But you're also in a privileged position where library buildings already have fiber. You're already the core of the network. Like, you can probably get ninety percent of the benefits that the city wants to expand already because of the way the city built out the network.
The backbone comes into this building. Yeah.
And they'll sell to you without having a broader business plan in place. They're not gonna sell to the rest of the city of Boulder until they figure a bunch of other things out. Maybe, maybe they'll sell the point for the I G A.
Does propose that we have two fibers in that, whatever they're called.
Those are, those are dark fibers. So that's different than whether they're actually gonna provide you the internet service. So they'll give you the wires.
Yeah, yeah.
But you want the wires to connect to the broader city, basically. You want the wires to connect their gigapop system, which is their upstream provider. So that's another thing to negotiate the I G A, because if you can't do that, then you do have to, there's an additional thing that's just being priced in there, which is you're gonna have to go talk to a bunch of people and see who can sell you internet service to handle what you need.
Is that something you guys are talking to them about? I mean, who is it that has this level of technical conversation?
I believe the I T team, the city's I T team is posing this option to the core team for the city.
Okay.
But I have not had a reading about it. I mean, I've, I've talked to the city I T team. I think they understand the the complexity here and also the potential for delays for us getting this thing off the ground. And the delay now at this point really is, if we don't have an internet service provider, and that may take three months. It may take us longer than this, right? Because they're not all just willing to jump and say like, yeah, like Z E O might, level three might, the gigapop consortium is not.
So could we ask Andy, Doug, someone from that side of the table to send to the media and read the right words? Asking about it. Because I'm following what you're saying, but I could not articulate that. Yeah.
I think probably, well, Andy or Amy could tell us.
Yeah.
So I think we just need to say, I, I thought, I can't remember the I D A in my mind, but I thought we had a, we're gonna have an I T agreement that's gonna follow us. This would be in the I T agreement.
Yes, but if there's anything that is at the high level.
Yes.
Money policy piece.
Yes, and we probably should say something about like, you know, will, you know, if they'll run Boulder Connect now, or, you know, I don't know, maybe, maybe, I mean, obviously the Wi-Fi pieces can, can, if it's in the in the schedule, it can be delayed since we already have Wi-Fi if the city's willing to keep that going, but but like that, that's the kind of thing we'll need to, some of that stuff we're gonna need to flush out a little bit, but but we will send you something. I'll work with Andy and.
I'm not seeing you, I think, as staff working for the city, you're not supposed to.
Oh, sorry.
Therefore.
Sorry, you're correct. Thank you for reminding me and I'm just hitting the wall of my technical abilities.
Yeah. Can I just say one thing about the internet service provider? Focus Connect, one of the things in the R F P was that we were looking for some redundancy. So if our ISP goes out, we still have internet. So they're already looking to vendors as a redundant internet service provider. And they said it's common to sign one month, two month contracts. And so if the city takes a little bit longer to decide whether they wanna be our ISP, we will have a, a backup that will remain our redundant ISP in addition to the city. So I don't think that's gonna be the bottleneck like we thought it was going to be.
Well, whatever you can do to outline for us so we can articulate clearly.
Sure, they're doing it for Dairy Arts and all those places, Chautauqua, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we're going to have another face-to-face meeting with the city.
Yeah.
You know, we're waiting to see a contract. So it's gonna be whether their words match on words.
Got it, got it.
I would say that that's our preference to be, to have the city be our ISP. It's one gig. I mean, we're not gonna get a better deal. Our patrons are not gonna notice a difference in speed. So that would be our preference for sure.
Great, thank you. And do you have anything you wanna add to this as far as what we need? Because again, you're gonna be the primary point of the Lawrence County.
No, I get those words. Not the whole of Andy or somebody.
I had two like, these nitpicky questions about the contracts.
Yeah.
Actually, I have three. One's extra nitpicky. The data breach liability cap, does that seem very low to you? Like six months for subscription fees?
You know, every one of these contractors is now limiting their liability to amount of money they're getting over a certain period.
It's not even six months. It's just subscription fees. It's not like.
We could extend that to the, to whatever we want, to a year and see what they say.
I think we should.
And typically what they'll come back is, is say, we'll do that if you'll pay for our insurance to back us up, but we'll see.
Yeah, I wondered what their insurance would be.
I mean, they should have, they should have, sure, they have cyber insurance, but.
It's, it's actually pretty tough to, I don't know, you probably have it, but it's very tough to get cyber insurance now. Yeah, I get, I know.
I just, that just seemed low to me. I just, I know we're gonna have a lot of data on the system and it's gonna be like employees' personal data, so maybe twelve months.
Four months.
Up it. The other question I had was the non-solicitation provision. There's a sentence that says that the customer will not, the customer being us, will not solicit the business of any customer or consultant of Focus Connect. So my concern about that was like, if we're trying to get a vendor, they have as a consultant or a customer that would keep us from hiring that vendor, that seems way too broad to me. I don't, I mean, I don't know, and I suspect that's not really what they need, but I just, I, it seems broad enough that I thought I should flag it. Because I mean, if if they use somebody as a vendor or a consultant on like some other issue, like not I T, then why couldn't we?
We would never.
Hire them. Yeah.
Oh, that's a good point. We'll change that.
And my really nitpicky question is the counterparts section that says that they can, that the contract can be exercised, executed in counterparts, including facsimile. Can we make that like digital, something, something other than facsimile? Unless we sign all of our contracts by hand, in which case it doesn't matter, but.
It's actually, they control all that, right?
No, I know.
We can certainly do that.
It just made me laugh. So I was like, so our options are hand or fax. And I didn't know if that's how we sign contracts, but it is, then great.
No, I brought it.
That's what the I R S requires, so fax.
I mean, I don't know, this would be where lead line comes in on this, on this, creating this detailed schedule now. And then we can hopefully tie it to performance and payment. You know, the, you know, payment structures, okay? And then so it's like a schedule of values that they typically call that in the legal world. So you know, you install this, you get, you know, ten percent, you know, if you're ten percent complete, you get ten percent. Well, I think you're fifty fifty, right? So the other piece would be since, like, are we gonna be able to pay this person? When, we're gonna get the money in the bank account in time to pay this person? And like, we get the invoice? Okay. I just don't wanna like start running into fault because we don't have a bank account.
Pay this person being Focus Connect?
Focus Connect if we sign them tomorrow or whatever Wi-Fi, you know, like, can be paid up.
I'm gonna jump on what you just said. So I had, like, maybe it was in the nitpicky category, but I thought your points were very relevant, but the billing and payment terms, it just sounds like we are advancing them for anticipated services for the month. And I just, unless I'm reading it incorrectly, they bill monthly in advance for fees for all services and related charges anticipated to be incurred in the succeeding month.
Advocate Securities Administration. Yeah, we need, we, we don't, I have, I don't know. Yeah, so.
That's like ongoing fees, so that basically have a monthly fee that we get billed every single month and it's for the month that follows.
Start paying them to manage the network and the.
Yeah, so we'll pay that thirty K. Well, they'll invoice us for the thirty K.
So like for, if for like, for January one, they'll invoice us January one for the services that they'll provide in the month of January, but, but those are set fees. So it's not like they're gonna guess how much they're providing us and
Okay.
bill us the outset. There's, they're telling us at the outset that every single month we're paying thirty K. They're gonna bill us that thirty K at the beginning of the month instead of at the end.
Okay.
But it's not a fee that's gonna change, is how I read it.
Okay, that just, that was not.
Yeah, because I read the same thing and I was like, what? And then I realized it's not the like impetition stuff. It's not the like consulting fees.
Precisely. I mean, it's like buying a consumer, right? You pay for it before you eat it. And in some sense, a network and security administration is in some ways consumed. We need them to be providing it for us that following month.
And I mean, I'll say just in the world of I T service contracts, which is something that I've done, but it's really common.
I just know, like, from government and public dollars spent, like, you usually don't pay for something you haven't yet received with public dollars. Yeah, and so.
So this is kind of a subscription fee effectively.
Yeah.
Okay.
Paying it to ensure you will receive it if you.
It's more like you're like Spotify's.
Okay.
But like you pay for it at the beginning of the month and then you use it for the month, or your cell phone, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Jen, did you have any questions?
No questions for me.
Okay, great.
It's a tremendous round of work that they put in to get this done. And Kara, Beau and Andy, thank you for your free time. And I'm excited, a little nervous, but excited to get this thing going. I'd, I'd recommend we approve this. I don't know if we have to make a motion, but.
There's a proposed motion in the legal status report on the bottom of page one. It includes leaving it open enough to negotiate the prices and these other terms we just talked about. You wanna use that?
Oh, bottom of page one of where?
It's a legal status.
Legal status, sorry, thank you.
I think we got two copies of the.
Yeah, there was two copies of it.
You're right.
Yeah.
I think there was one in the package, one attached to the legal status report.
Oh, okay, I see. All right, proposed motion, thank you. I moved to the board of directors to accept the proposal and contract that Focus Connect Solutions or I T Service has been authorized its execution subject to negotiation of a final contract acceptable to President Keeter, Director Farnin, I T Senior Manager Schuman and legal counsel. Is that right? So it's.
Shum.
Shum.
All right, Shum.
It's correct in the text.
My mind changed.
Doug has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Kara, second. Any further discussion? Hey, Sylvia. Welcome. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much. Thank you very much to Andy.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just being on this big, big shoe to drop, if you remember, like, from day one, I said, one of the biggest things we had to do was the I T. I can remember being in this room with the entire staff, describing to them that one of the big unknowns was the I T. It's not known yet, but we have that ball in the ground and it's now time to do the work, so.
If you can, meet with the city again to tell them where we're at. And you have Don on the, seems like he's been very helpful, so.
He has been extraordinary. The city I T department, where, you know, two months ago, it was like, put everything in writing and we'll talk about it on August eighth. They have been incredibly helpful.
Okay, good.
To this day, right?
He seems very nice.
Appreciate it. One other thing to report, and I'm happy to take any questions to the directors, like it's we, we will meet, but the the work never stops, right? So we're meeting with a, a benefits broker this week. We do have a price back from the insurance company.
Take your kids.
We're gonna sit down and look at that and I hope if it all looks good to be bringing that around next next Tuesday, at which point, once, once you've seen it, we're not asking for approval or anything like that. That's the point at which then it goes to staff for a couple of weeks or so of comment on the healthcare package. So again, it was kind of nip and tuck, which one was gonna be more expensive. I had assumed it was gonna be healthcare. I think it will now because this contract came in at less than what I anticipated, but it was kind of like, they're all in that wheelhouse, right? It's, we're talking millions of dollars. And so yeah, you'll be seeing that next Tuesday, I hope. And that's the end of our report.
Great. Any separately updates? Trustee matters. I think we wanna do a readout on last week's council meeting. We wanna do that before or after Kim's report, since Kim may wanna weigh in on that too. And I'm guessing, I'll do a double check here. I don't think we need to do an executive session to talk about the things that came out of the council meeting. Because everything that came out of the council meeting is already public. So, yeah. Why don't we, since that would be the last part, Kim, why don't we go ahead and have you go through your legal report with whatever you need to, and then we can come back around to the council report.
Everything else in my report is simply a report for your information. If there's any questions, I can answer those. The one item that we do need to address is Uh, if there's any questions, I can answer those, the one item that we do need to address is uh, is also included as item eleven, which is the uh, audit exemption application, which, we might go ahead and take that up now, Johnny.
Yeah. See that, please.
So we received a notice from the state that we had failed to file an audit in twenty twenty-two. I drafted this resolution pointing out that we didn't exist, we didn't have any money, we didn't spend any money. Nevertheless, I just want to file the audit, and we'll spend a lot more time fighting about it. So the resolution uh, number twenty twenty-three oh nine oh one is requesting an audit exemption, and it's drafted to fit into the statutory requirements, so that we don't have to get signatures on all of the audit. Um, I went ahead and completed the exemption form, which is included in your packet, simply stating zero, 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 with explanations on the side. But once we, I know. It'd be, the states become very good at following up on these things, which for forty years of my practice, they haven't been. And now, it's kind of automatic, so you get things like this that it don't make a lot of sense, but it's a lot easier to just play along, we'll send them the audit exemption and be done with it.
Bureaucracy.
And so, as I understand it, we need to pass the resolution, and every trustee needs to sign the audit form, so we'll need to get signatures from Jennifer.
Yeah, actually, since we, I did the resolution so that we wouldn't have to get every signature, so we'll be okay just getting the ones that are here.
Okay, super.
I like that, I wonder if we could all sign the IGA? Could we do that? We have all of our signatures on IGA, just to see, like, just seeing it here, it's like, it's cool to see.
If, if you want to, we certainly can, if the board wants to.
Can we do this resolution?
Yes. I, I move approval of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh nine oh one relating to uh, approving an exemption from audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second? Sam? Okay, Phil Bedida, oops. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously, thank you, Kim.
That's it for me.
Okay. Great. Um, so you all able to watch council meetings last week, or, I mean, how much of a, of an update do we need to do here? The Daily Camera article was, I think, fairly accurate.
I read all the news coverage.
Yeah, the buildings are being leased, um, I think, to me, um, most interesting part of it is actually the suggestion that, of Yates made, um. Um, so as I understand it, the city is going to try to give us at least a twenty, will, will give us at least a twenty-year lease, and is looking into whether we qualify for a thirty-year lease.
Had a conference call with the attorneys today, and um, it would be very difficult for us to qualify, and they particularly want to just go with the twenty years, because if they have to go, if they go to thirty, we have to take each of those leases back to the city council for discussion and approval. So, and I think with the, with the termination provisions we talked about, doesn't matter if it's twenty or thirty.
I thought maybe you were gonna suggest that his comment about a subcommittee of council was the most interesting comment.
Well, that was the most interesting comment, and my heart stopped. But he withdrew that, when he realized that we were close to complete and were negotiating things like our staff transition, so thank God for that. So, council was all, except for Mark Wallach, council was in favor of the longer lease, and the main question was this question of when we revisit, because the majority of council, I think all of council actually was in favor of allowing us to revisit at some point. Um, Bob's suggestion was that the lease be written so that every five years, the library district, and only the library district has the ability to reopen the lease in order to revisit the question of lease versus ownership on some or all of the buildings. So the city would not have an opportunity to reopen the lease, we've got the twenty years from, um, and then it's the library district's option to say, hey, hold our hand up, you know, we wanna take ownership of kind of gear, we wanna take ownership of, of that. Personally, I thought that was a really good suggestion, um, council was kind of stuck on, do we do three years, do we do five years, do we do ten years, so it took that out of the discussion. Um, so we made no commitments about that, I just said, you know, we couldn't, we didn't have authority from the board about where to go with that, but to give you guys, if you guys want to give us some direction on that, I think that would be great.
I heard three years, because three years would be tied to the, um, the appointment process, right? That they, Bob's suggestion was five, okay. Like, Mark was, I mean, there were all sorts of things.
I think five.
But three years is what I heard them say related to the appointment process, right? Is that what?
Yes, yeah, we can go back to that, we can go back to that. Yeah. Yeah.
I, I, it, I mean, technically, I think if we're gonna make a, we could probably ask to reopen the lease at any time.
That's my question.
Yeah, I mean.
Would we be putting it in there that we can't reopen it?
Yeah.
For three to, three to five to ten years, or that we just?
Has to be five years.
I just, why put it in there at all?
The key to it is, we would have the ability to terminate the lease every five years. So, in my thinking, what that means is, is this, if this building becomes a huge financial burden, in five years, we say, city, we're out of here.
Okay, so this is not like.
He's gonna bring them back to the table.
What's, what's being proposed is not that, like, we have no ability to reopen discussions that related to the.
That's right.
Unless it's been three to five years.
Yeah.
This has to do with termination of the lease.
Yeah, we have that termination right, every five years, it's a hammer.
Yeah, I see, I see what, yeah, I think.
And the city has no termination right.
Correct.
I mean, Bob seems sincere, and they seem sincere in getting this done, and so, I, I think five is, also, it's beyond any of our terms, so.
And.
Maybe, but need a.
The other thing that, that we talked about, I mean, David Gare sort of gave me a heart attack also when he was doing his summary, because he said, well, one of the advantages of leasing is that the city gets to control the improvements, and I'm like, no, no. So I raised that with council, and I think they agreed to that, so, and I had previously talked about that with Chris Muschek, so I think that's the other piece. We have to be able, the board has to be able to control what gets done to the buildings, when, and how much we spend on it. We can't have the council, the city dictating that, and I don't think the city wants to do it.
They were very clear, or Bob was very clear that he, they didn't want that, I mean, he, he wasn't negotiating for the council, but, you know, like, just that, that they would allow us to do that, he thought that was a reasonable request.
Does that mean that that, that runs counter to like, the standard landlord relationship? I mean, normally, if they're the landlord and we're the lessee, then they would have control over, and, but they would have the, it, it's, it's reversed, right? Like, they would have the obligation to maintain the buildings, wouldn't be on us. So we're kind of reversing that relationship by saying that they're leasing us the buildings, but then we have the obligation to maintain them, so yeah, we need to be very careful.
Well, those, those commercial leases, you're responsible for a lot of it.
City leases.
Yeah.
Exist, they maintain control, they maintain an ability to approve what you're doing with improvements, even if it's your money. Um, and that, so this will run a little counter to the way they just catch many leases, so.
How, with this lease thing, how do we see, do we still see us taking the, the service calls and, you know, doing the, you know, dispatching maintenance, and, you know, we wouldn't be tied into the city maintenance crew, or, you know, thank the, David.
Me and changes.
Okay, good, all right, that's what I thought.
I just, we're just gonna have to be careful about how we, how we start that.
That's why that termination provision is so important in my mind.
Yeah.
That very reason.
So is everybody okay with that? Uh, Jen, Sylvia, with this approach of lease, come up?
Go ahead, Sylvia.
Sylvia, did you have something to say? You're muted.
You're on mute.
Oh, it's like.
Are we on mute?
Oh, we. Trying to.
No, no, she's muted, I can't, I can't hear her either.
You're on mute. Can't hear you.
And I can read, I can read, I can read your, your comment, I don't have any thoughts on this topic.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, it's good, I wanna keep going.
So was she saying, yeah, she's, I think we're trying to.
Oh, that's.
She did, my phone, my phone is not letting me unmute, oh, can you read it all, can you read it? Do you wanna, do you wanna share anything right via, okay.
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 So we're good to go with that, and then the other thing.
Indicated no.
Yeah, it was the appointment process, and for that, they thought the two, two, two for three years made sense, there was no real discussion about that. So basically, the proposal that we made is what that they agreed with, so the two trustees will be non-voting members of the selection committee. Now, that will still go to the county, and Bedida, I don't think you've reported out on your conversation with Marga about that to the group. You told, I know you told me, but I don't think that was.
Said it here, I can't remember. I don't know, that I had met with her, but, and she just had questions or issues related to the appointment process and said that she um, had concerns about the two bodies being um, involved again in the appointments, because it burned up so much time and, and took too long, and I thought I talked about, you already talked about that.
Yeah.
I did. Yeah, so she, um, but what she did say was that she was going to pursue a public conversation amongst the commissioners, and I haven't seen anything. I said, I'm sure you'll let us know, and she said, yeah, I'll let you know, but I haven't seen.
What does it mean that the trustees would be non-voting?
Get to participate in the discussions, you get to participate in the interviews and the recommendations, but in terms of making the final recommendation about which candidate to advance to the full bodies for ratification, the trustees would not be voting.
Why?
And why was that?
Yeah.
Because the city said so.
That's what I mean, you can.
I didn't remember. No, they did, that was the immediate, he said, and it was even in the staff memo, they said, these would be non-voting positions.
I don't know, I mean. Okay, I, I think, can we push back on that?
I think.
Back on that?
Um, on the non-voting portion?
Yeah.
Statute says that they vote on the final ratification, but what, what we haven't resolved yet completely. Well, in the documents that we prepared, you present the initial candidates. So to me, that's.
Come from the trustees.
Oh, okay.
Thing, so if you submit one candidate, then the committee looks at that candidate and says, yes or no, we'll promote him or not. Um, and I, I think that's the portion, I don't think, no, that's the portion I preserve, is that you're the ones who bring forward the candidates, whether it's three or five or one.
This is like an advice and consent of the Senate kind of situation.
And, and so, Kim, it would not be an open, public process the way our appointment worked, or we, we would not open it up to the, the general public with an application process the way that we were appointed.
You, you might, the board of trustees.
We might, okay, but the city or county, city or county will not manage that process, okay, got it.
Uh, again, that's as the documents are currently drafted, and nobody said anything about it, so.
But I don't think that's where the city's head is, or the county's head is, I think all of that is still to be determined.
Okay, that's helpful, though, because otherwise, um, I think we would want more control.
I agree, I agree.
It was literally just like, we're a totally passive participant in the meeting, that's.
This may be a little bit like leasing, you guys may have to put up with it for three years, you know, or something like that, before they're really willing to let go.
Yeah, but I mean, but if we get to sort of control the initial vetting, then like, that gives us a say.
City in the.
Yeah, I don't think that they're gonna, but.
That's what we've proposed.
Yeah.
We haven't seen that language.
Thank you for your input.
But when we talked with, well, no, when I talked with Claire, it was, it was, Claire's other point was that the county should manage the process. Right, cuz she was saying, well, you guys are new, and you don't have any staff, and, and all that, and, you know, you don't have a system, and she said, the county has a system, or even the city has a system for board submissions, but I said, you know, aren't you on a different calendar, and, you know, and in a different flow of process, so, well, yeah, but we could still, like, just, you know, we have the staff, is what she said. So you're saying that this counterproposal would put us in that lead of recruiting applicants and having a public process that we are meeting and engaging in.
And making comments, it seems like.
But I'm with, I'm with Kara, I'm with Kara here, like, if, if city, Johnny, if city council has no awareness that that's the language in our proposal, are we gonna have to bring that back to them again for another study session?
Oh, yeah, because this is all in the three-party IGA, so this is gonna be another conversation, and once the county comes to the table, there's gonna be some hassling back and forth about what the process actually looks like, and it's what he's had this conversation.
Two IGAs are like, they're not really, like, we can deal, like, we can deal with that as we need to deal with it.
Correct, and that will be after we do, so, so we need to finalize this two-party IGA with the city, and get that going. And then the appointment process is part of the three-party IG, IGA with the county. And so, the way Kim has structured this so far, our bylaws say we control the process, and if they don't get around to it, we control the process. Right? So they have to actually.
Is that IGA is just about appointments, nothing else.
It's everything.
City, county.
The county.
Yeah.
Appointments is really the only thing that's substantive.
Yeah, okay. I just mean, like, we don't have to worry about, this isn't gonna hang up to the other IGA.
No, it's not.
That to do is by April thirtieth.
Right.
When Johnny rides off into.
Turns into a pumpkin.
But that's why, like, the Marga call for the meeting is really important to be happening.
Yep.
Sometime soon, and, yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't pay attention enough to their agendas, or even know, you know, where to be.
Well, it's gonna be.
Would they notice? No.
It's not gonna be till January, December or January, I guess.
I don't know, I think it may depend on when the city tries to prod them to do something with it.
Okay.
All right, so we don't have to take any action on the appointments piece right now, same.
And will leases be negotiated within the IGA or separately?
Separately. Yeah, we just need to get the high-level stuff in the IGA, and then the need releases.
We started that discussion today, because there's a, there's a bunch of issues about this building, I'm gonna have to tackle, the floodplain is the big one today, what does that mean for insurance?
Yeah, and will we maintain the license as well as a separate document from the lease?
We talked about keeping the license and using that as part of the lease, um, I think it'll happen that way.
So, so the license will remain separate?
Yes.
Then if we shift to ownership, it's. Yeah, good.
Yeah, so the negotiations are going for, it's, like.
The leases?
On the IGA?
Yeah.
Yep. Is, is that, is that next week we're supposed to be done with, that, that pushed, or?
So it's been on hold as they waited for this information from the county, from the city council, and so now it sounds like they fixed it up and they'll send.
Great.
Or, did they give you any idea when to expect anything?
No, they didn't, um, that's all we back out to tomorrow and have them at least add that information, get it back to us.
I agree.
Yeah. Riding ground.
Yeah, because Kim, Chris did commit to get back to council within thirty days. So that means we need to approve it before it puts to council.
We meet every week.
It's easy.
Okay, well, anything else?
I have a trustee matter, that, that was what I was, just to bridge on, I, I just wonder the, and I don't know if it's necessary, but the value um, of bringing the whole contract to the board, I, I hate that, like, well, I know five of us are lawyers or whatever, but like, um, is that within our duties to look at these contracts? Uh, I would hope eventually that the staff, I mean, if it's a very, I mean, this is a pretty large one, but like.
You're talking about Focus Connect?
Focus Connect, I'm, I'm looking, I'm talking about Focus Connect, just because, like, uh, within our duties as trustees, uh, you know, our name is, you know, oversee the library, hire David, that kind of thing, and I just wonder how much value, if you bring it to us, we're gonna review it, right? Uh, and so, uh, I don't know, that, that's maybe a question for the board, and.
Can I reframe that a little bit?
Yeah.
I think, so I think it's, this has to come to us for approval, because it's above the limit.
Correct.
Director can do, so I think the question is, what does the board need to review a purchase that is above the limit from the director? Is it the contract, or is it something else?
Yeah, I mean, uh, whereas much as I appreciate Kara's thorough review, and I didn't see myself as going through that uh, process only, and uh, because I didn't see it as my role as the trustee. Uh, and so I just don't want to over-manage this to happen.
I have some districts where I'll just put in the status report a summary of the high points.
Yeah.
Um, and that's really all you need, and then I have some that. And then I have some that, there's actually a signature line for me on the contract saying approved as to form. And they rely on that, so however you want to do it.
Back to you, bylaws, I mean, different libraries do it differently.
Yeah.
I've seen libraries change based precisely on what you're talking about, like where Douglas County used to truly, the board would argue about snow removal contracts and what they felt was adequate, not adequate. Uh, to now, I don't believe they, they approve of the budget and I don't believe they review any contracts.
Yeah, I mean, I think after January one or something, we should visit this discussion because, only because like, I, it's, that, I don't know, within our roles, that's all.
And within some of them, like, with what you'll do with the, which we'll propose, but we haven't written the bylaws yet, so I will do it. But the book budget, the book budget, you approve of like one point six million dollars, but it's not one expense. There are multiple vendors and all these different things. I don't think you want to review all of that.
No.
So I'm hopeful that we can do is we can agree upon the fact that you are approving a purchase of books within a dozen or two dozen or so different contracts that then allows for the collection development team to go about their business and buy books for the library without you having to review that I'm holding up the process.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's going to be case, I mean, in this case, I just had more.
No, I, I, I think you did a wonderful job.
Normally, the, um, but normally, like, I think, yeah, I think the model that David's describing or, or, you know, like, that we would be approving things sort of more in concept than, and like, yeah, we don't need to review the terms of most of this.
Yeah, and that was my question, because I was like, well, do I need to read through this whole thing and, and review each line item? And, I mean, that's my day job, but, but also. Well, it's just a role.
Isn't it your day job because you fuck this?
But it's also just the, the, so I took up training this weekend. Um, and I actually would, I, it, uh, Mark, I think it's Mark, the Library Foundation, but what's the guy's name? Uh, so, uh, he's on lots of boards and he gave a really nice.
Doug, can you just hold that thought for one moment? Jen, Jen Ferris, can you let Sylvia back into the Zoom? She just, she just messaged me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Doug, she's just trying to get back in and can't.
Oh, it's okay.
And I know she wants to hear your story. Thanks, thank you. Okay, okay, go Doug, go Doug, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, so I took a wonderful training and it was about, you know, the world, role of like good performing boards and stuff like that. And, uh, during this weekend, so, uh, he offered, I think it's about, you know, a presentation or something. He offered to give that to us and I, I, if we have time, I, it's not a, we're doing great, I think. But it was actually a pretty nice thing, so, um, he, he offered to do it and, uh, but it, but it just kind of, it, it, you know, what's the role of the board versus the management and.
Yeah, if I can, so Sylvia, what we've been talking about is the financial policy, remember, that we put together. We're going to need to revisit that, we know. And one of the questions that's in this is what's the role of the board going to be in reviewing things? Did you hear David's discussion about the book budget?
Um, I did not, unfortunately. I, uh, I figured out how to fix my microphone on my phone and then it cut me off. So. portion of the discussion, that's okay, please, please, I apologize for being a disruption.
So David gave us an example, you know, when we are doing the regular budget, the book budget is going to be like one point six million to several vendors. We don't want to get down into that level of detail. So when we revisit the policy on, on finance, along with the other policies as we discuss, we're going to need to figure that out. Um, what's the level of review for the board? And Kim, I assume you've got some examples you can share with us?
Yeah, and ultimately, what your goal is or what all of our goals is, is for you to become what's called using, utilizing policy-based governance.
Yeah.
So you'll get out of all of this detail and you won't be meeting with the staff anymore. But kind of for now.
And.
Yeah, I'm also reviewing.
You want to review everything, yeah.
So we are scheduled to take that up again.
Yeah, then.
In the summer kind of time.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I mean, it, it, there's like the, there's like the fiduciary and then there's, you move to the next level, then you move to the, and I just think, uh, I'm okay with it, but I also feel obligated then to review it. And then I, as a professional, feel like I'll take some professional liability, so I, uh, that's my concern.
Jen? You're trying to, Sylvia, Sylvia was trying to say something, somebody was.
Oh, yeah, thanks. So, and I think, I mean, that presentation that we received at the foundation on Saturday was really good. Um, I do think that especially since we're, you know, we're thinking about all of the pieces right now as, you know, we're developing the district. Um, but at some point, you know, we have to like, let the staff do what the staff is paid to do. Let David would do what David's, uh, here to do. And I, there is a fine line, and I see this a lot with the boards that I work with, where the best intentioned person who wants to do the best they can as a board member doesn't realize that they've started to drift over into micromanagement of the organization. And so I do think that if we have an opportunity to get those reminders periodically, it will help us do, you know, do a better job as board members, just kind of remember we need to stay in our lane, essentially.
That's great.
I just think we're in a unique situation with setting up this district. It had one who served on many, many boards and understand that role distinction, um, in government and outside of government. I just think, I think we're in the right place. I think it's a little early to be having that kind of conversation until we get through, you know, some of these major infrastructure pieces and, um, and getting this district established. But, yeah, I agree with this. I mean, right now, this is a working board. I suspect that would not be the case. Once the transition is there, then it will go into a policy board. But right now, you know, it's us, so.
I, I, I just bring it up because I, I, you know, I want to do the best I can, but I also don't want to overstep.
Yeah.
And, and I would, I would urge you, when you get a count, a, a contract like this, just sort of skim it.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what I did.
So.
I'll start just doing a summary in this status report and then indicate, if you want it, let Mitch know.
Okay.
That'd be great. Let, who know what?
Mitch or me or somebody.
But we want more information?
If you want a copy of the contract.
So Mitch is the keeper of the documents for us at this point.
If it's over a certain amount, we'll get.
I mean, if there's, yeah, if we're going to have to see it, yeah.
Yeah.
See it.
Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order?